Recording in progress.
All right. Good evening, and welcome to the June 23, 2025, Tualton City Council meeting. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. First item on our agenda is the Pledge of Legions, led by Counselor Sacco tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. That brings us to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the council tonight or an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments about three minutes. If there's anyone in the room or in Zoom who would like to address the council, this would be the appropriate time. Is there anyone in the room who would like to address the council? Seeing none, I see in Zoom a hand up from Patricia Parsons. Welcome, Patricia.
Thank you. I'll make this brief, and thank you for allowing me the time to speak. I'm hopeful that my request is, in the scope of listening to everything this evening, I hope that my request is cost-effective and yet brings a benefit to the community. I will say that as spring has unfolded and now we're into summer, we're starting to see a lot of activity at the park, which is fabulous. One thing that I've noticed at the park is the garbage cans are filling up quickly with all of the folks visiting our beautiful Iback Park. And it dawned on me that we have absolutely zero, at least I don't know of any, recycling bins adjacent to the garbage cans. And so as I'm watching residents and visitors in the parks toss away plastic into our receptacles, I'm pressed to ask the city council to think about what we would need to do in order to bring recycling cans into the parks. So that was one thing that I had on my mind. And then this morning, a neighbor spoke out to the city council and to our police department about the four-way stop situation at Iback and 103rd. And I've gone online, as requested, from Chief Pickering to the website that you can go in and state the need. I've done that, and I'm hopeful that somebody will respond back. I'm more than happy to discuss this in depth with anybody who would like to take an ear to this, but it is a real problem. It is not even sometimes a rolling stop, but just a full-on, just plow-through. And my concern is, we have all these kids coming and going from the neighborhood to the park. It's that time of year. None of these kids, unless they're with a parent, are taking the time to stop, look left, look right, and I'm just worried that a full-on accident could happen. So my recommendation is a blinking crosswalk, like we have, further up the street or down the street on Iback. And perhaps the city would consider even putting in some kind of a photo mechanism to give out tickets. Now, wouldn't that be an income-producing event? So those are my two things for tonight, and I guess that's all I have.
Great. Thanks, Patricia. On the recycling, can you follow up with Ross? Not Ross, geez. Flashback with the Parks Department on, do we have recycle bins? Because I think I've seen some.
We do for special events and for special rentals. So when somebody gets, rents out shelters, we do. But we do not have recycling bins in our parks, mostly because of the downstream with our Parks Maintenance Crews picking up the trash and recycling, the separating of it. But I will follow up with him to see if there's been a change in maybe philosophy or like what we could do.
Okay. Thank you.
And maybe it's a matter, I'll just add this in, maybe it's just a matter of adding one recycling can in each park that the residents can get to know, hey, that's where we drop our water bottle recycling. I don't know. But it's come to my mind as I've watched residents toss stuff into the garbage cans that should maybe not be located there. Thank you.
Thanks, Patricia. And we might have one here. One more? Sir, come on up. No, go ahead, sit.
Your Honor, council members and esteemed members of the Tualton, greater Tualton community. My name is Ramsey Colishaw. I have been now a resident for about five years. Before that, I worked here for nine years, and then before that, worked here and played here for pre-flood. Just to give you some indication about this. I currently work for Ride Connection as one of their transit bus drivers. I'm the guy that comes by here six times in the morning and six times in the afternoons. First off, I would like to say thank you so much for continuing the duck grates for great ducks thing about having some stuff under select grates so that the little ducklings don't fall to their doom. I want to thank you for continuing that since it was implemented two years ago, and I was the, one of the main people trying to push for that. Today, I'm, there's a lot of stuff to cover, but I think today I just want to be simple about, I feel like with the higher prevalence of leaf blowing that has been going on in yards on business properties, we have been really not good eco-friendly neighbors for the waterways, our native pollinators, our native pest predators, all of these things. This year, the aphid problem in some of the maple trees has been tremendously worse. And I think a good portion of that is because rather than rake leaves and let them sit in, underneath the bushes, we just have people blow them away. And that's where a lot of the predators will winter over, and things that'll also eat those predators. So we have, in essence, given the aphids full rein to cause so much havoc. You wake up and your windshield is covered with little dots, and it's like, did it rain? And you discover, no, that's honeydew, and you have to really scrub it off because of the aphids that populate mostly the maple trees, the sweet gums, and that sort of thing. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the Xerxes Society and their big thing about leaving the leaves. I understand the necessity to make sure that walkways are safe because nobody wants a frivolous lawsuit because someone can't watch where they're stepping when it's wet leaves or what have you. But I feel like brooms and rakes can be more effective in some ways and probably a little more cost-efficient than, and just blowing everything out in the streets to then be swept up, and then we are missing a large population of our things. Our frog populations, was that a time thing?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Go ahead and wrap it up.
Oh, so in essence, something to be thinking about is, let's, maybe we can try and become better stewards of our natural community that we have to try and coexist with. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't know there was time. This is my very first time visiting.
You're welcome, then.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have anyone else who would like to do public testimony? All right. Seeing none, that'll bring us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda are those items that are considered routine. It will be adopted by one motion unless someone on the council would like one of them removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight's consent agenda consists of seven items. Item number one, consideration of approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of June 9, 2025. Item number two, consideration of resolution number 5885-25, authorizing changes to the fiscal year 2024-2025 adopted budget. Item number three, consideration of resolution number 5889-25, authorizing personnel services updates for non-represented employees for fiscal year 2526. Item number four, consideration of resolution number 5890-25, approving and authorizing provision of workers' compensation insurance coverage to volunteers of the city of Tualton. Item five, consideration of resolution number 5891-25, adopting the city of Tualton 2026-2030 capital improvement plan. Item six, consideration of resolution number 5892-25, authorizing the city manager to execute internal governmental agreement for participation in the broadband users group. And finally, item number seven, consideration of resolution number 5894-25, authorizing the city manager to execute a project funding agreement with the Energy Trust of Oregon, Inc., for the micro hydro turbine project at the Tualton City offices TCS site. Would any city council like any of these items pulled and heard separately later tonight?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as read.
Second?
I have a motion, second, to adopt the consent agenda as read. Any discussions on those motions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you. That brings us to special reports. Our special report tonight for an outside agency grant awardee is Love, Inc. Welcome, Ken.
Thank you. My name is Ken Karen, and I am the executive director for Love in the Name of Christ or Love, Inc., for Tiger, Tualton, and Sherwood. And on behalf of our volunteers and behalf of our clients, I just want to thank you for walking alongside of us as we work to try and help people in the community who are struggling. A person who calls our office, we go through several things with them. We ask them some basic contact information. We ask them about their family. We ask them about their budget, both ins and outs. The one thing that we do the most is we ask them their story. We want to know what's going on in their lives so that we can help determine how best to try and help them. Your resources have enabled us this last year to be able to do that. As we came into '24, we struggled. When your grant came in, it really helped us tremendously keep our doors open. We're now looking at a different future, and we're looking at how we are going to progress in this changing time. Couple stories I want to tell you about. One is a family I want to call yours, mine, and ours. Just like that old movie, he had kids, she had kids, they have kids. They needed help over the years. They needed help with diapers. They needed help with linens. They needed help with personal hygiene and cleaning supplies. They needed help in two special areas. One was with rent and utilities, with a grant from one of our church partners and through another church. We were able to step into those different areas because they met a certain criteria. And without your help, that wouldn't have been possible. One part about this story that is really fun and exciting for us is they no longer need us. We were able to help them in a time where, help to bridge that gap. That's our design. That's our hope. That's our prayer, is that we can step into that moment of need. The next person I want to tell you about, and I share this with you because it's just happening recent, and I don't know the full end of the story yet. One, a woman came to us back in 2019. She had cancer. She asked us for help as related to personal hygiene items. She lives in assisted living center, and most of her resources go to cover the cost of that place. And she needed clothing. The cancer treatments caused her, her weight to go up and down, and we were able to help her in that area. Couple of my volunteers stepped into her life. One of them, in delivering those, those personal hygiene items, she, the client asked her, could you bring me some snacks? And upon hearing it, that volunteer stepped into that area. That volunteer really couldn't afford to do it. She lives in a one-room place herself, but she decided to walk alongside this person. A different volunteer that who helps with the clothing, upon hearing and talking with this client, realized that she knew an avenue to be able to help in that aspect. So she started taking over those snacks and started bringing those to her once a week. The two to get together have gotten together on Fridays for a little over a year and a half now. They're both grandmas. They both have granddaughters. They share about their granddaughters. Back in December, excuse me, this client shared that she has a year left to live. My volunteer had two choices to make. She could stop doing what she's doing, because oftentimes when we are faced with somebody else's mortality, we don't want to embrace that. We step away. Luckily for me, that volunteer embraced it, continued to meet with her, continued to bring those snacks that meant the world to this woman. Two weeks ago, she stopped responding to texts, and we didn't know what was going on. My volunteer went to her assisted living, knocked on the door, no answer. They can't tell her anything at that location because she's not family. Finally got a text back. She's at the hospital, and things aren't going well. Friday, I received a text from my volunteer saying that she's back at the assisted living center. Hospice has been called in, and family's been called in. My volunteer in her text to me said, I hate to leave her alone. I'm thinking that she didn't want to leave her alone but needed to. I got to receive another text about an hour and a half, two hours later, seeing the hospice and her son finally arrived. And she was able to then leave that circumstance. It was very difficult for her to do that. She knew the pain that was going on, the conversations that the two of them had had were aspects that she, because she's been alongside of her. I don't know the end of the story yet. I know that it is a matter of time. I had the opportunity to speak with this client a couple moments, and she was talking about her granddaughters. And I shared with her, tell them about your life. My grandfather asked me to do his funeral, and I said, Grandpa, tell me about your life. I only know this amount. I treasure those memories, and I know your granddaughter will treasure those memories as well. We don't always have the ability to help make everything right. We don't always have the ability to meet the rent needs that individuals have, but we work to walk alongside them. Each one of our clients has a story, and we believe their story deserves to be heard, and we try and listen to it and try and walk alongside it. In the last year, I've had several conversations with individuals because resources are drying up, that the amount for rent has gone down that's available. And I have to then step into a conversation I don't like to have. And I share with them, here's some, here are some things that you can do. In case you can, you don't find the money, here are some different waiting lists to try and get on. I tell them to look at their resources that they have. Don't put it in a storage facility. Sell it, because there are no resources to help fund those storage facilities, and you're going to just end up losing it. And I keep going through several other different things with them. I don't like having this conversation, but I do it willingly, and I do it with honor, because somebody needs to tell individuals when they are at that point. So I said, I wish there were a happy ending for every circumstance, but your resources that you have helped us with are making it possible for us to walk alongside the happy ending, walk alongside a person who needs somebody in their life as their life is ending, and to tell the person the brutal, honest truth when they make call after call to different other locations, and nobody answers the phone, and nobody calls them back. We try and call. We try and answer, and we do what we can. I just want to thank you again on behalf of our clients, behalf of my volunteers. The one volunteer that's walking alongside this woman, she's a Tualton resident. I cherish her. This is the second client that she's walking alongside in this aspect, and I keep praying for her that as she does this, that she does not get worn out, does not get burned out, and has that ability to do, because she has a gift in this area, and I am so thankful for that. I just want to again, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Ken. Questions, comments for Ken?
Well, you're easy.
Well, thank you for coming tonight and giving us the stories, because, you know, we always wonder, you know, we were asked where the funds go, how they used, and organizations like yours, you know, $1,000 says go quite a ways when you're a small organization. So it's good to hear that, you know, the funds were needed, they're being utilized, and impacting people's lives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. So that brings us to public hearings. We have one public hearing tonight. So this is a public hearing for the city council to consider resolution 5883-25, adopting the city of Tualton's budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2025, making appropriations, levying ad valorem taxes, and categorizing the levies. The hearing will be considered, the hearing will be conducted as follows tonight. First, the public hearing will be opened, and city staff will make a presentation. Next, the council will hear from members of the public who wish to testify in favor of the resolution, followed by members of the public who wish to testify against the resolution, followed by anyone else who would like to testify about the resolution. Upon conclusion of the public testimony, individual counselors may ask questions of city staff and any person who provide a testimony. After council questions, the council will close the public portion of the hearing and consider the resolution. Upon conclusion of deliberations, the council will consider whether to adopt resolution number 5888-25. Does any member of council wish to abstain from participating in this hearing tonight? All right. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and presentation will be given by Don Hudson, our Assistant City Manager. I think it's going to be a Don Hudson night tonight.
Just kind of. So you've already introduced myself. I'm Don Hudson, the Assistant City Manager and Finance Director here with the city. In front of you this evening is resolution 5888-25, adopting the city of Tualton budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2025, making appropriations, levying ad valorem taxes, and categorizing the levies. Oregon statutes require the city council to adopt a budget prior to July 1 of 2025 in order to operate, expend money, incur liabilities for fiscal year 2025-2026. The Tualton Advisory, Tualton Budget Advisory Committee approved the budget back on May 28 and forwarded it to the city council for your consideration for adopting this evening. So in addition to the budget that was approved by the council, by the committee, the city council has the ability to make adjustments to the approved budget by no more than 10% of the total fund, budget in each fund. Staff is proposing two adjustments to the general fund this evening. The first is for $6,000 in the library budget for promotional and rebranding items, including the new Mastodon mascot, which will not be received prior to June 30. So we're asking those to be carried forward. The change is offset by an increase to the beginning fund balance in that fund. The second is back on June 9. The Parks and Rec Department, who was presented to you for a meals program in the Juanita Poll Center, and council-directed staff to come back with an adjustment to the budget in the amount of $40,000 in the Parks and Rec budget, which will be offset by $10,000 in donations and sponsorships in the budget, the rest coming from the general fund reserves. The total city of Tualton budget with these proposed adjustments is $165,489,430, which includes personnel and materials and services expenditures. Over $26 million of one-time capital outlay projects are also included in the budget this year. So Sherilyn stole a lot of my thunder on this next portion. I was mentioning a number of initiatives related to the city council's vision and priorities are included in the budget as well. And for those who were not paying attention during the work session or not tuned in, I will list some of those that were in there. Conducting a street tree inventory and research adaptive tree, street tree species, revisiting the food cart policy and specifications, hiring a climate action plan manager to manage the plan implementation, training city staff on trauma-informed care practices, launching a new city website, examining the city's options for creating and incentivizing diversified housing, finalizing the first major update to the city's transportation system plan. And last but not least, but there are many more beyond this list, but the last one I'm going to point out is reviewing the growth opportunities and cost structure for recreation programs to ensure sustainable program offerings. In addition, the resolution in front of you imposes the city's permanent tax rate of $2.2665 per thousand dollars of assessed value for operations and $5,263.160 for bonded debt service. At that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. So at this time, is there any members of the public who wish to testify in favor of this resolution, either in Zoom or in person here? Okay. Are there any members of the public who wish to testify against the resolution, either in person or in Zoom? Is there any other member who just wants to testify either way on the resolution? All right. Questions from counsel for Don. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close this hearing. Bridget, counsel Brooks.
This is for our audience members as well. Is part of our budget continuing the implementation of our B-City USA certification through the Parks Department and run by the Tualton Parks Advisory Council?
Yes, there are funding in the Parks and Rec budget for those incentives.
Thanks. And that's where they would reach out to offer support and contribute.
Yes, contact the Parks and Rec Department.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm looking both ways now. All right. All right. With that, I'll go ahead and close the hearing on the resolution and open up for deliberation.
Okay. I'll make a motion?
First and second reading, one.
It's a resolution.
It's an ordinance. Oh, I'm in the wrong one. Okay.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 588825, adopting the city of Tualton budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2025, making appropriations, levying ad valorem taxes, and categorizing the levies.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 5888-25. Any discussions on the motions? Counselor Sacco?
Aye.
Counsel Hilliard?
Aye.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel President Pratt?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Also, it's unanimous. It's adopted. Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Don't go far.
Nope, I'm just going to stand right here. I'm going to sit right here.
All right. So that brings us to general business. Item number one, consideration of ordinance number 1450-25, establishing a core area parking district tax rate for fiscal year 2526. You're back on, Don.
I'm back on. So I'm sitting in for William Sullivan, our management analyst, who the staff reports from. I felt the need to have him come for this short presentation. So back on April 22, the Core Area Parking District Board met, and part of, one of their responsibilities is to forward on a recommendation for the tax rate, which covers the operations of our city parking lots in the core area. So staff met with the board and presented the financial position of that fund, and it was determined, particularly because we did not have the blue lot capital items in this year, that there was not a reason to recommend an increase in the tax rate going forward. So the ordinance you have in front of you is to maintain the core area parking tax rate rate at $209.36. There's actually a convoluted formula that goes into that, but the tax rate is recommended to stay unchanged. That, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions for Don.
I'll make a motion to adopt, or is this first reading by title only of ordinance number 1450-25, establishing core area parking district tax rate for fiscal year 25, 26.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for reading by title, first reading by title only of ordinance 1450-25, establishing the core area parking district tax rate for fiscal year 25, 26. Any discussions on this motion? Seeing none, Counselor Sacco.
Aye.
Counselor Hillier.
Aye.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Brooks.
Aye.
Counsel President Pratt.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. First reading, please.
Ordinance number 1450-25, an ordinance adopting the core area parking district tax rate and credit for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
I'll make a motion for second reading by title only of ordinance number 1450-25.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for second reading by title only of ordinance number 1450-25, establishing the core area parking district tax rate for fiscal year 25, 26. Any discussions on those motions? I'll flip it around, Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Brooks.
Aye.
Counselor Sacco.
Aye.
Counselor Hillier.
Aye.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel President Pratt.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Second reading, please.
Ordinance number 1450-25, an ordinance adopting the core area parking district tax rate and credit for fiscal year 25, 26.
I'll make a motion to adopt, or did we have to? Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1450-25.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion in two seconds for adoption of ordinance 1450-25, establishing the core area parking district tax rate for fiscal year 25, 26. Any discussions on those motions? Counselor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Counselor Brooks.
Aye.
Counselor Sacco.
Aye.
Counselor Hillier.
Aye.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel President Pratt.
Aye.
Chair votes yes, it's adopted, or resolution, the ordinance is adopted. You're up again. Next item on the agenda is resolution 5887-25, amending city utility rates. Don?
After this, I'll give you a slight break and then I'll be back later. So thank you Mayor Bubinik and the members of the city council, I'm Don Hudson, the assistant city manager and finance director here with the city. Resolution number 5887-25 amends our utility rates for the following services, water, sewer, stormwater and road utility fees. The parks utility fee is also included in the resolution, that amount is remaining unchanged for the upcoming fiscal year. The resolution also rescinds the resolution you passed last year at this time, resolution number 5785-24. So the city council adopts the water rates along with the local share of the sewer and stormwater rates. You'll recall that there is a regional component of both sewer and stormwater that is set by the Clean Water Services Board of Directors, which adopted a 3% increase at their meeting on June 17th. Those rates are included in the attached resolution for informational purposes so that in our resolution it has all, all the rates, so that action, you're, you're not being asked to approve those rates. The city's rate for water, sewer and stormwater follow our rate studies that are included in each master plan. The water rate is, is increasing by 12% per the master plan and sewers at 8% and stormwater at 3%. The road utility fee increases by a three-pronged index that is the same as what Washington County uses for the transportation development tax. And that percentage is 8.32% beginning on July 1st. Also included in the resolution are system development charges for water, sewer and stormwater, but again, those are for informational purposes only. The water STC is indexed effective February 1st of each year per the water ordinance and the sewer STC is set by Clean Water Services with 96% of that STC being passed through to Clean Water Services and the city retains only 4% of the sewer STC. The stormwater STC is also set by Clean Water Services and the city retains 100% of that STC. The average residential customer will see their monthly bill increase by $7.27 to $117.50 per month. At that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Don. You're having an easy night tonight.
Keep it that way, please.
I'll motion that we adopt resolution.
I do have a question, so. I was slow to respond, so apologize. So these system development charges that we're looking at here, is this what we talked about in, in funding the climate action team member?
No, these are just for growth-related parts of our infrastructure.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Now I'll motion that we adopt resolution number 5887-25, amending water, sewer, stormwater, road and parks utility fee rates inside the city of Tuolton and rescinding resolution number 5785-24.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 5887-25, amending city utility rates. Any discussions on those motions? All right, Counselor Sacco.
Aye.
Counselor Hillier.
Aye.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Gonzalez.
Yes.
Counselor Brooks.
Aye.
Counsel President Pratt.
Aye.
Chair votes yes, the resolution is passed, it's adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to item number three, a resolution 5893-25 regarding clean water services. This is the resolution that Counsel President Pratt requested back in May and we concurred on issuing this resolution. See Mr. Gall here is, do you want to, you're attending or you want to say something? Put you on the spot, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I wasn't intending to say much, I was really just wanted to be here in person to hear any of the discussion that council had about this resolution. We are supportive and want to implement both, for the record. Sherilyn Lambos had shared this with us prior and now you're taking official action, which we appreciate as a partner. So I'm here to answer any questions, otherwise just wanted to be here to listen.
All right. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
So I'm going to turn it over to you with your, in discussion.
Oh, my only discussion is, I think as a council, we, we aim to be fiscally responsible and transparent and, and part of that I think is having our service providers, you know, the annual, talking to us and then maybe looking at the billing system, but we just want that to make sure that we're aware of, you know, how these rates are set and moving forward, that we're taking on our responsibility to be responsible for our community.
Of course. Couple of things about coming to visit you, we may want to come twice because we used to do this, like many other, like TVF and RNO comes once a year to present a kind of state of the district and we talked about bringing that back, so you would see at least once a year about our partnership with Tuolton in terms of CWS. So that would be one presentation, but I think also billing and rates is another one that's a focused one that we might want to do separately as well. So I think you'll see us a couple of times, probably in the fall. I also want to put a plug, I know Counselor Brooks went, we're going to do another round of what we call CWS Essentials for elected officials in September, probably in mid-September. That's a half a day to learn kind of a little bit more about the basics of Clean Water Services and what we do and you can get a tour of our Durham facility, which is the facility that serves Tuolton, where you can also attend one where you would have a visit to our lab facility to learn about our lab and what we do in the lab. But those have been very well received by elected officials because a lot of folks don't really know what we do and how we do it and why we do it. And those are the basics that we're going to do another round in September. So I want to invite you, you'll see that in my monthly newsletter, that hopefully you get a chance to read and hopefully some more members from Tuolton can attend in September.
Thank you, I've done the one over at Durham and it's, it's pretty fascinating, all that goes on there.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I'd like to motion that we adopt resolution number 5893-25, calling on Clean Water Services to take certain actions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 5893-25, calling on Clean Water Services to take certain actions. Any discussions on these motions? Seeing none, Counselor Gonzalez.
Yes.
Counselor Brooks.
Aye.
Counselor Sacco.
Aye.
Counselor Hillier.
Aye.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel President Pratt.
Aye.
I vote yes, so the resolution is adopted. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
That brings us to item number four in general business, consideration of recommendations from the Council Committee on Advisory Appointments. Maria.
Yes, well, thank you. Again, we interview, I think it was June 3rd, the, when we had our interviews, I, my dates get a little confused, but we had a wonderful group of community volunteers who were eager and excited to, to interview and meet us and talk about how they want to serve our community and how they want to enhance our, our, our life, the way we live here in Tuolton. So we had a, again, always wonderful people, very smart, very talented, I can't even, it's always really hard to pick and select people, I, I want them all. But we can, so thank you all for coming and interviewing and allowing us to hear you and allowing us to answer questions and congratulations to those who got selected and thank you for those who got interviewed.
Thank you, Maria. So the committee recommends appointments of the following individuals. Matt Kilmartin for the Architectural Review Board, Patricia Parsons for the Architectural Review Board, Keith Hancock for the Architectural Review Board and Kylan Honer for the Architectural Review Board, all terms expiring June 30th of 27.
And our final person we're recommending is, this is really exciting, this is the designer of our poster for the Punkin Regatta and it's Brenna White for the Arts Advisory Committee.
So I'll make a motion to recommend these appointments for the Architectural Review Board and the Arts Advisory Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the recommendations from the Council Committee on Advisory Appointments. Any discussions on those motions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, it's unanimous. Next item, items removed for consent, we had none. Do we have any council communications? Go ahead, Counsel Brooks.
I have one, one, I, I just want to make sure that people in the community, whoever's listening, that know that there was a travel advisory for all Americans traveling, put out by the State Department, so if you didn't catch that, it's important. I want to thank everybody that participated in Pollinator Week and I also want to acknowledge, take a personal point of privilege to acknowledge Susan Noex's birthday, she had a surprise party, she'd turned 80 and, and the mayor was there and it was a lovely celebration of a lot of different community members and appreciation for her and her, her work.
Any other communications? Les, to have a motion to adjourn the city council meeting, but don't go far.
So moved.
I have two motions to adj, to adjourn the city council meeting, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions, all right.